We're recording, we're on, we have camera, I think we're okay.
So, great.
Not my mother will tell me.
Okay, we'll get a text message real fast.
Alright. Alright, everyone rise with me. Thank you everyone, good evening, thank you for being here. I'm gonna use the microphone even though it may feel a little unnecessary to make sure that the Zoom picks us up appropriately. Uh, we're here tonight for our June tenth, two thousand twenty-five council meeting. Um, our first order of business, we'll call, call the order, we have all councillors present, town manager, any citizen town manager. Our town clerk is across the street running our election. First order of business is uh proving the minutes from our board of assessors meeting on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, council doesn't even have any edits to those minutes. Alright, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the board of assessors meeting minutes from May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five as written.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff.
Uh, aye, I've seen.
Yep, Melissa.
Aye.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero with one abstention. Okay, up next we have our council meeting minutes from May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, didn't even have any edits to those. Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five as written. Um, I'm gonna give that to John.
You got it.
Okay, um, all those in favor of adopting the minimum meeting minutes from May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero with one abstention. Uh, next order of business, we have the signing of the treasures warrant. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the treasures warrant from June fifth, two thousand twenty-five in the amount of nine hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-one cents.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
So, you'll see a line, five zero, three nine zero, DuSete excavating seventy-five hundred dollars. That's for hauling leaves and relative leaves.
Okay.
Well, it's twenty-five, twenty-five loads. Um, so in respect that we've got that, we received a complaint. Um, from a citizen in reference to the leaves. I asked the finance director, assistant town manager to calculate, calculate the last twelve months. Which is what I based my decision on, to cancel this and just have it taken over DuSete. Um, and what did you come up with for number?
Since July first, it's twenty-three thousand seven hundred, and that's just for what we paid for DuSete, not what our highway crew did.
So, that means since July of last year, we spent twenty-three thousand dollars hauling leaves?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was the basis for my making the decision that we wouldn't take leaves anymore, that they could take them to DuSete's. Up, up, two miles up the road or two thirty-six. However, I think, you know, if it becomes an issue, I'm open to listening to what the council wishes would happen.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, any questions, any other discussion on the warrant? All those in favor of signing the treasures warrant, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Um, up next, we have public comments, um, and as Tim just mentioned, we did receive an email from a gentleman in town, Martin Bolger, um, located at Seven Crescent Court. Uh, I'm gonna send this to Tayan for, uh, to include it in the record, but essentially was just expressing some concerns about the recent change at the transfer station regarding leaves, which Tim just alluded to. Um, Tim, there anything else you want to add on the? Leaf topic.
Well, then we had studied it for, for, you know, three or four months, we looked at it, trying to figure out ways we could pay money. Um, no, we did not get public input because it's an operational change. Um. So, we talked to DuSete, they are open Saturdays from eight to noon plus all week. Um, and I've been reaching you on this, these items since March.
Yep.
When we started talking about it, so, um, you know, when he is asking for more transparency. You know, I don't know how to make them come to the pond and drink the water, we, we talked about it all the time. I put fly about a transfer station, the staff's talked about it. So, that, well, we can totally get.
Tim, that's leaves, I'm sorry, it's uh, grass clippings along with leaves, correct? Okay, I was asked, I assumed it was, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, that, that takes care of any public comment we've received via email, if anyone in the room that would like to speak on anything, not any of that. Is there anyone on the phone, or on Zoom? Okay, we will close public comments, move into unfinished business, number one, town hall renovation contractor choice. Um, so, to get everyone up to speed on where we are at in this process, so, the town council, um, put out an application, sorry, put out a, um. A notice, I guess, to collect applications for our construction management firm to help us with our town hall renovation. Um, we received eight proposals, and last Thursday, the council interviewed three of those firms. Um, one being Charter Brothers, one another being Wright Ryan, and the last one being Allied Cook. Um, and tonight, I think, we've got a couple of things that need to take place, um, we need to have a motion, first, um, making our selection. Um, and then also a motion to authorize the county manager to sign that contract. Uh, before we get there, I would love for each of the councillors to just say a few words on your experience with the interviews. Jeff, I know you, Jeff wasn't able to join us, so, sorry Jeff, not gonna call on you for that. Um, and I, and then we'll go ahead and make motions and move forward, so, does anyone, would anyone like to go first?
I love going first.
Great.
Uh, so, we, again, like, like Valerie stated, we had eight, um, we will look down to our three top sources. And, uh, they were all very close as far as, uh, what we received, and the quality of the product that we're looking at. Um, we were looking at, at not only their, not only their business structure, but how they spoke to us about our building, the historical views of our building. Um, and their history in working with historic buildings. Um, so, without letting it out of the bag, and I won't, the, the group we chose, um, I feel very good in letting them, uh, run our project and take care of. The town hall that everybody wants to stay the way it is outside, but look new inside. Um, again, great group of people, work as a team, and I think we're gonna get a great product.
Thank you, John, anyone else, next?
Uh, it's been made clear that, um, all three companies are highly regarded, and this was not an easy choice, as all three companies were certainly qualified, uh, to take on the feet of our town hall project. Um, the couple of things that, with the company that I would like to move forward with, that. Put them a little ahead of the rest of the two companies was, uh, their presentation was certainly direct and easy to follow. Uh, we gave all of the companies five questions, um, that we wanted answered, and one company specifically, their presentation was designed around those questions, where they. Answered each individual question, so I didn't, so it was just easy to follow. Um, I also certainly appreciate an attention to detail with facts and findings, this company, uh, discovered certain things in their walkthrough, um, of the building. And they certainly know what they are getting into. Um, and the other thing that I was impressed with is, um, the greatest compliment any company can get is a good referral. And all three companies provided excellent referrals from people, um, from other work opportunities. But there's another thing that is the greatest compliment, and that's repeat work, when you actually get called back to work for the same business. So, with those three, bring, with those three things, um, in mind, I feel like the company that, um, I'm going to choose just had, um, an edge over the other two companies.
I don't think my mic is working. It's like weird, um, I, I agree to echo all these sentiments, everybody, the three, the process that we utilized to whittle it down from eight to three, clearly we worked, we had three great proposals that we. Reviewed on Thursday, so I think whichever way we go with it, it's gonna be, um, a great decision, we're gonna have a great team that's working on this building. I agree with Melissa, um, the, it was very close, and the, the interviews, I think, were really eye-opening in terms of the volume. Contractors and workmanship that we, that we have access to throughout this process, and we're gonna end up with a great product.
Thank you, Bill. Um, all the last, uh, so as I mentioned, we interviewed three firms, Wright Ryan, Charter Brothers, and Allied Cook. Um, I'll, I'll talk a little bit specifically about some of the firms, but no one else did, no one else did. Um, I think, I, I agree with us, the council, I think we would, it would be, would we would have success with any of the firms that, um, we interviewed. Uh, I did, I did personally feel that Allied Cook, um, despite having, um, a great presentation, and a good experience with that with the police station, I felt like they struggled to manage their time a little bit in our interview. Um, Wright Ryan, I think, would have been, um, a great fit, but I think ultimately Charter Brothers was the, the, the best option for South Florida, given the presentation and the attention to detail and the creativity presented. Um, so, with that, I will go ahead and make a motion that the town of South Florida can move forward with Charter Brothers as our construction management firm for the town hall renovation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Charter Brothers is here this evening, thank you all for being here, you guys did an excellent job last week, we're happy to award you, Jeff.
Are we gonna vote on it?
We are gonna vote on it, let me do that first, sorry. Um, jumping ahead here, um, all those in favor of awarding the contract to Charter Brothers, say aye. Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Congratulations, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for being here last week, look forward to working with you. Next, I will make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign that contract and move forward with the contract with Carter Brothers.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff. Melissa.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Congratulations, thank you for coming, congratulations.
You're best.
We'll be in touch, I'm sure people will be in touch in the next couple days.
Thank you, gentlemen, it was a great presentation, and, uh, the teamwork shows, it really does, so, great work, you should, looking forward to serving you good with, on the town, so.
Thank you. You are welcome to say, but there's no, no. Well, we do have an O point update, um, but I think it's minimal, other, um. I'm gonna make a motion really quick to move unfinished business number three up, ahead of unfinished business number two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all of the favors, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa. Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. So, our only update is the, um, I'm just shuffling around the agenda, um, pertaining to the O point timeline, um. Tim, I can, I can read through this, I don't know if there's other information, okay. So, uh, I think, and I think you all were aware of this, um, from our interview last week, but Oak Point had originally submitted a timeline indicating a ninety-five percent submission would be available for our next meeting on June twenty-fourth. Um, because of the process of hiring you all, uh, this date was moved to July twenty-second instead, so, um, because I think you all need to be engaged prior to that, so that's really the only project related update this evening. Yeah. Any questions or anything from the council, or, or Tim, anything else to add on the O point update?
Nope, just that, um, we'll be working, I'll be working with, um, Charter Brothers, the contract signed, I'll get it over to Phil, get it reviewed. And hopefully get that signed and initiated next week, and get you guys connected to Oak Point Peter, and we need to get started, because there's stuff hanging, waiting for you to look at, uh, that has to. Move forward with your, your stuff on it, so. Started to move, move forward, I.
Yeah.
They gradually, Charter Brothers, I think it's an excellent choice, I think they'll do a great job for town.
You should, thank you.
We look forward to working together.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Are we done yet? Before it gets that, before it gets to the pub, alright.
How can I?
Thanks, guys, it was a great venue.
Alright, so, we took care of unfinished, unfinished business one, and unfinished business three, moving on to unfinished business two, town hall community art project. Um, Jen is pulling up some slides that we're not included in our packet, and I did some to the council just a little bit ago, um, these will be, be made available on the website eventually, but, um. Couple of weeks ago, I had, um, discussed and, and brought forth, forth in the council, and the idea of me kind of organizing, um, a community art curation effort, given. The town hall renovation that's happening and the downtown revitalization, and so, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to share with you all what I'm thinking, none of this is set in stone, I definitely want feedback and thoughts and your perspectives. Um, but, um, just have a little bit of an update, um, and intend to kind of keep everyone updated as we move forward. So, um, I am referring to this as the South Florida Town Hall Community Art Curation Project. Also open for suggestions, if we'd like to shorten that or, or something, but that's, that's why I'm referring to it. And thinking about this is really focusing on selecting and displaying local artists, work from lo- local artists, uh, either here at town hall or throughout our downtown. Um, focusing really on showcasing local talent, enhancing community engagement by creating a community engagement piece of this, where there's some type of community involvement in the selection process. Um, and then ultimately, you know, this paired with some of the other work that we have going on downtown can really help to strengthen our community identity. Um, I'm hoping that at the end of this, we go to the next slide, John, that we have a vibrant and welcoming town hall that serves as a visual representation of our community. Um, we can gain some increased community involvement in the local art, and strengthen relationships with all of those local artists, so that it could be people that could be tapped in in other situations. Do you want to the next one? This is really the meat of it, um, this top section planning, I think, is really where I'm at at this point, and I'm looking for feedback. Um, but as this moves forward, I'm anticipating this kind of planning period where we make some key decisions on what we would like to include. Then that would open up to an artist call, selection process, and installation, I'll talk through these in more detail. From a planning perspective, I think kind of what I'm looking for feedback on over the next couple of times that I speak about this at council meetings. Is, I think we need to identify potential spaces in this building and opportunities where there's space to paint the mural, paint, paint something. Um, and I think that also applies to around our downtown area as well, um, that, the potential for that. Um, I think it'd be important if there's any key themes that we would like to cover with any of these pieces, that we need to give any guidance or anything to any of the artists that may be selected. Um, determine if we want to contribute any money towards this effort, um, and then lastly, decide on what the selection process would look like. Um, once all of that gets kind of nailed down, I'm anticipating some type of public push to say, hey, we're looking for artists to, um, contribute to this project. Um, then we would engage, you know, there'd be a window of time where that would be open, and then the selection process would begin, and I think. For the selection process, again, just my suggestions of kind of establishing somewhat of a selection committee, um, that could be us, that could include town staff, that could be community members, that could be any group of people. Um, but I, I think it would be a nice for us to have a selection committee, and then this whole promotion, I think, could be paired with kind of the grand opening of the town hall. Um, so, that's kind of just my thoughts on paper at this point, on the next slide, these are ideas that I have. And looking for reactions, yes, no, do you have other ideas? I think some type of tribute to our old police station on the first floor would be really cool to include, given that that was kind of a funky situation that existed for what, thirty years, that was intended to be temporary. Um, and it's kind of a big piece of history of this building. Um, certainly our partnership with Tuskegee is something worth, um, creating some type of, um, space or piece for. Um. I attended last night the Marshwood High School Senior Awards banquet, my daughter's graduating, and the Marshwood High School has this permanent art collection, and so every year. They select a piece of artwork from a graduating senior to store in Marshwood High School permanently as part of their art collection, and I, I didn't know that this was. A thing that happened in South Florida, but I learned about it last night, and I thought something like, we could, we could adopt a similar type of approach, where maybe we have a space somewhere in town hall, and we say, every year. Or, for some period of time, we make, we, we select a piece that gets added to that art collection. Also partnering with the schools, Marshwood High School, essential great works, um, to create some type of contest where we could have student artwork displayed. A storytelling exhibit of around the first floor ramp, so that will be remaining when you come into the first floor, that entire first floor will be like our public facing space, where the clerk's office will be, and. Um, assessing and planning, all of those offices will be down there, and so that ramp will still be accessible, and that's, there's a decent amount of wall space there, that could kind of be this like journey, art piece. Um, and a, another idea would be to update and expand our collection of flags for the light posts downtown, we've got strawberry glasses out now, monkey man. Um, monkey man, and. What's the third one?
Home for the holidays.
Home for the holidays, thank you. Um, so, you know, we could potentially explore deciding to refresh those, we could explore deciding to add more of those, just an idea. Um, then also lastly, murals, uh, I think there's big space, big wall spaces up here, and big wall spaces on the first floor in the lobby entrance. Also some opportunity outside, outside the buildings, now outside. Um, or potentially some type of statue sculpture, something for town hall upfront, um, again, these are all just ideas. Um, that we could throw out there, we could decide and say, we for sure want to have. One of these things, or we could just kind of open this up, curious anyone who has any opinions or perspectives?
I have one question that was thrown to me. In surrounding towns that have art displayed, um, much like Airbnb's and, and breakfast. They have the artist information and possibly also the price. Um, is that something we're gonna be looking at, I mean, I said, it was, it was approached to me of, is it gonna be where, if it is a local artist, can they sell? You know, can they put their card in their price, and if it sells, they get another one, or we get something else, is that, is that something to think about, I mean, can you, is that legal on town property to do that? And that's the question.
I, I don't know what happens.
It's just something that was brought up to me that I'd like to get an answer to.
I, I, I mean, this is exactly why I wanted to kind of talk through this, because this isn't a totally baked idea yet. Um, I think for sure, any pieces that are put up for sure need a mi- a minimum half, this is who it is, you know, and their information and stuff, but the sales thing, I think. I, I mean, I, I don't really have a much of an opinion on it, I mean, I think that I, I kind of, I actually kind of like that idea, but I think there's some like legal pieces to work out, but not opposed to it all. Um, so those are just some ideas that I have. If you'll flip to the next slide, um, what I'm going to suggest is that about a month from now, that I can come with a more detailed proposal with timelines of kind of like, hey, this is when we will. Open this up to the town, who's to be requesting those submissions from local artists, and this is kind of when we'll start to figure out a selection time period. But I think that on the left side, the key decisions, I think these are some of the things that we do need to, um, start to have some more solid answers for. Um, like, are we gonna dedicate any money to this, um, if anyone has any specific. Or desired locations that we'd like to try to find a piece of artwork for within this building, or if we just kind of want to. Maybe with town staff or with Oak Point, we can kind of go through the plans for the building and figure out where there are spaces, and start to document. The sizes of those, so that we can kind of have an inventory of like, we have all of these opportunities to put a piece, so an artist could say, I want to submit something for that wall, or. Or a space this size, or a medium like this. Um, so, I know there's not a ton of like tangible information here yet, I'm just looking for reactions from people, um, and hopefully we'll have a more detailed plan for you all in about a month. But, reactions, questions, thoughts?
I, uh, can I go along, just an idea?
Yeah.
I think it was DeCarlo had mentioned about empty storefronts, and, and art in there just to have something there, I don't know. I, I like that idea, I think Rochester does it downtown, or some of the shops do it downtown, and it just kind of makes things look a little bit nicer, and, you know, not as, uh. Relatively.
Dark storefront.
Yes, I, I add that to the list.
Yeah, thank you. Cool. Alright, any other questions or anything for me?
I think Tim and I had talked about these two back walls, and these are.
Yeah, that, that was kind of when I mentioned third floor mural, that's like the space I was thinking, absolutely. And also, like, right when you walk in to the lobby on the left, like, I feel like that's a big space where we could do. I think I just, like, we have a Tuskegee kind of thing there, I think it'd be cool to, um, potentially have, like. I know that there is an artist from Tuskegee, brought by part of our sister city partnership, who's potentially interested in helping us with that. Uh, so I guess like the big question, I think maybe for tonight is the money question, um, I don't. Is this anything that we have any money set aside for in the project, or do we, is that the one we'd like to do?
No, we don't, we don't have any. We don't have any money, we don't have any money set aside. Um, however, I, I think that's something you can, you know. Go through the broad, go through the steps you would have, and I think at some point, somewhere in there, we need to start looking at, you know, i- is this gonna be donated, is it gonna be cost factors? You know, I would assume stuff from high schools dominated, I would assume that stuff, but. Um, and, and then there's cost factor, I think, then, you know, uh, one of the things that talking with Charter Brothers is, you know, they brought up a narrative. What are some of the extra things you want, we, we would like if, if there's an opportunity that arises. Where I do have a grant for seventy-five thousand dollars to apply for dudes' windows, there may be a cost savings there, so I think, and the project moves forward. Your project, and this project, it is to, at some point, start to identify what funding would be needed, and where that would.
Yep.
Then we can identify, okay, so with thirty thousand dollars, where would that come from? Will we have that within the project, or is that something we want to set money aside for the next budget? Something like that.
Got it, okay.
I, I think there's, there's opportunities, just, I think you're gonna get a little more structure to it first.
Yep.
So we can kind of define where, where we want it to.
Absolutely. So, I will commit to having some more structure for this at our July twenty-second meeting, but I'm not super committed to that date, so if we, if we have a full agenda and we need to move this around, feel free, but. Um, definitely we'll have more details, timelines, and specifics and stuff at that point, I just wanted to get feedback.
I just, I appreciate the, um, presentation, um. My concern, um, right now, from what I heard, um, it sounds like it's very big. A lot of different potential options, um, I don't doubt that next time we talk about it, we'll have fourteen other people in the, in the audience saying, hey, why not make a, uh. Sistine Chapel and paint it on the ceiling or somewhere, you know, we're, we're gonna have everything everywhere, I, I would recommend. Uh. Narrowly down, maybe, I like the project idea, and maybe we have two, three very distinct points that we focus on, and say, this is what we're focused on. With the potential of moving forward.
Yeah, yeah.
To kind of just hand it in a little bit.
Totally.
And then, the money, um, you'd need to convince me pretty hard to, as to why we'd be spending money on this.
Yeah.
I think it's a, a great initiative.
I totally agree on the reining it in, um, I know I threw a lot of ideas out there, and I hope that that didn't, anyone took that to me, that I, we should do all of them. Um, I don't know if any of the ones that I threw out, if any, if anyone had any, or if. Anyone think that to me that I we should do all of them. Um, I don't know if any of the ones that I threw out, if any, if anyone had any, if there are any stronger ones from anybody. Um, we don't have to talk about that now, but um I I think maybe for our next meeting, when I do bring this back, I think that would be a good thing for us to just have some discussion to hone in on, like. Do you want to focus in on the murals or the these other ideas or other ideas that you all come up with? Um, because yeah, if we just leave this really open, then it's going to get nuts. Yeah. Thanks, Jeff. Alright, so any other thoughts on this? Okay, thank you all. Um, we'll move on to new business number one, MMA Grant Award. Um, so it looks like um the Fire Chief has um received a grant from Main Municipal. Association as part of the Ed McDonald Safety Grant Program to improve workplace safety. Um, and the grant is in the amount of one thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents for new traffic safety vests. Um, and so the chief just needs um the council to formally accept the grant, so I will go ahead and make a. A motion to accept the grant from MMA in the amount of one thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents to be used for safety vests for the fire department.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Uh, aye. Motion passes five zero.
Um. I I would like to say one thing, Valerie.
Yeah, please.
Uh, I truly appreciate uh Chief Hamel, Chief Ruder, um. In what they're doing in obtaining grants, reaching out for all the equipment that is letting software purchase without coming out of taxpayer dollars. They're both doing fantastic jobs since we brought them on board, getting money for all the equipment they need without. Again, it affecting our tax base, so thank you for everybody for that effort they put in.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Okay, I will turn it to Tim and John for the town manager's report.
On the transfer station, we're working, we've had a lot of requests for credit cards, be able to accept credit cards, so Jen's working on. Getting a credit card machine for the transfer station. Um. The highway has a new hire, uh Jake Wilkinson, he's filled the open position and he started working. The new college firm he's retrieved was delivered way ahead of time, is delivered on Friday. Um, the crews have been working to assemble it, so I will take this and this is a picture of today, so there. Uh, that shows you that they're starting this morning and working through the day. Um, so we're about four weeks ahead of time on that. So Jay is, they've been working feverishly to get it installed and get it done ahead of time. Um, Jay was able to rush last week and get the the. The bed ready for the college to be laid in, so. That's well on its way. So kudos to Jay and his crew, they're doing a great job. Again, I'd say this down money because they're doing a lot of the way to work. Uh, police department had five accidents, sixty-five traffic stops. Fire department said sixteen calls in the last two weeks with a hundred ninety-two year to date. Uh, the old engine on very removed from service and stripped of its equipment, working on mounting the equipment on the new engine. Uh, main EMS is coming to the station on Friday, June thirteen, to conduct their formal inspection. On our non-transporting license, if everything passed inspection, we'll have our license on Friday. So, and then on that, I just fired the transfer license, Nick said. What's the next step for us to get, go from non-transport to transport? And they tried to chuckle and said, an ambulance. We said, oh, okay. They said, really, all the all the high fat's done, the paperwork's all done. So now it's just a matter of getting an ambulance, you're getting the equipment on the ambulance, getting that certified and providing the staffing. So. That's good news. Code enforcement had nine building permits, six plumbing permits, four certificates of occupancy, twenty-nine inspections, three violations. Um. And we've hired an administrative assistant, his name is Mike McGinnis. Um, for Martha who's leaving tomorrow. And he'll be part-time for code, fire department, public works, and he'll be signing on June sixteen. Zoning Board Appeal will meet on July first for an administrative appeal. The Planning and Economic Development Department, Public Care, the Credit Enhancement Agreement is on the twenty-fourth of June. The planning board meeting for this week has been canceled. Uh, Impact Study Team is meeting next week, June eighteen, with all the patent heads.
The library, the door, the name was three thousand seventy-five. They had forty programs with four hundred and twenty-seven people in attendance. The author visit, um Paul DiGroni, is coming tomorrow, six o'clock. Recreation, the summer camp is completely full with wait lists. Senior program, they're just not working.
Yeah. Thank you.
The senior program tomorrow is having a Father's Day luncheon with Southern New Hampshire Ukulele Group for their entertainment. Uh, for assessing, we're now will be meeting with KRT this Thursday to discuss next steps of the reevaluation that is coming to an end. Neighborhood changes, or the data entry um has started and the sales analysis on the new neighborhood parameters will begin this week. The town clerk is across the street during the election for the school budget today. Um, my area of finance, HR, benefits, we had forty-one liens get brought to the registry of deeds this morning. So we still have time, there's no foreclosure, it's just a lien at this point. And that is lower than it was last year, so that's positive. Um, finalizing the credit card machine, as Tim said, uh to be started up at the transfer station, I have a meeting with the gentleman on Thursday to get the machine all set up and trained page. Um, I've been cleaning up the storage rooms downstairs, getting ready for the renovation, there's storage here, there's storage there, there's storage everywhere, so um it's it's a big uh. Task to take on. Um, there has been another uh round of the resilience grant that has opened up for seventy-five thousand dollars. So I am looking into giving another grant for solar panels uh for one of the town buildings. And we are watching budgets as we come to a year end and also entering in the new budget for the new year, starting in July first. And we are working, we're finalizing the TIP budget. Uh, DeCarlo is away at a conference this week. We'll be working together to finalize his TIP budget. And be able to bring that to the council at the next council meeting for you to review.
And our admin, the gray works regional land trust is notified by land land for mains future staff that. They board approved their funding for both a hundred acre, one hundred eight acre white marsh, drug, and better road and twenty-four acre Cox Pond. Eight off of Route ninety-one, eight acres off Route ninety-one projects for the. Full request amount, so I'd like to say thank you for providing a letter of support. Um. Was appreciative of the quick turnaround. The land trust is working to complete the funding needed. Uh, we had a downtown side grant application, it was reviewed and approved. Um, we had a meeting with Lasso Architects on interior finishes here. Um, had a meeting with a Tuskegee Day Group on town participation for the weekend coming up. Uh, toward the town hall with three construction manager candidates. Uh, had another meeting with Oak Point Lasso on updating the schedule. Uh, the construction manager interviews completed inside the wind waste contracts and completed sign the Eagleman contract.
Great, thank you. Um, that takes care of town manager's report. Councilor member comment? Jeff?
Um. Don't have much, I just want to um, well, I missed the actual interviews with the top three um. Whatever they are, uh.
What's that?
Contacted, yeah. Um. I I wanted to say thank you for the um work that went into getting us the applications and like the grading sheet and all that. Um. You know, the public didn't see that stuff and know what we were doing, but I felt like that work, that alone was a very. Robust process and I appreciate the, you know, the brain power that we need to putting that together for us, so I think that is. Definitely a process that helped us, you know, set us up for success, so thank you.
I do not have a comment this evening. Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I just um kind of want to echo Jeff said, and then just kind of um, I guess my comment is, I just. I said it when we were talking about the construction manager um process, I think that. All the effort to get us the initial eight applications, then um the guidance that we had to whittle that down to three, all three candidates that we interviewed, I think we've done a great job on that project, so. The process worked really well and I think that we ended up with the cream of the crop and uh the process was. Relative was relatively painless uh from a town council perspective. I know there's a lot of work in the background, so. Um, just thank, thank you, Tim and Jen and all all your folks for making that easy and making it. Easy for us to make an informed decision and and make the right decision.
Tom, anything?
Uh, yeah, I did. Again, thank you for all the effort in on that. I mean, I know what it takes to get to where we're doing and you guys did fantastic and thank you to Jay and his crew. Uh, we haven't had the best weather for them to be out there working and to be ahead. It's uh, it's impressive, so thank you to them and I will appreciate it greatly when we don't have to go down. Mallory's very dirty, really, with a blacktop. That's all I have.
Um, I agree with all of that. Thank you to all of our maintenance staff for everything they do always. Um, I want to congratulate all the market seniors, um graduations this Friday, it should be ninth night. Um, and just wanted to point out, I I mentioned earlier, I attended the senior award night last night and it was just the most special event. Um, and I just was really impressed with how much. Um, our teachers really are invested in these students and the kind of words they had to say and delivering those awards is really, really special, so we live in a special community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Out of cheer, I move re adjourned.
No.
Oh, sorry. Out of cheer, I move, we went through an executive session, sort of one MSRA, four oh six A personnel.
Thank you. Bill, Bill, I'll take that. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's you all. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Um, Jen, I will get our executive session motions and send them over to you later. While we close out.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
You do the first and Joe the second on that one.
The last one?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, you had John and Bill.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, John messed it up, then John made it and then Bill took it in.
So I was confused.
Uh, I was.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
We still have the owl.
That's usually my thing now.
Yeah, Jen, you, okay, Jen, 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 sorry, can you kill owl first? Thank you.